Would you like to be in the meeting of the Pedalum City Schools Board of Education? If you would all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge and by...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a matter of housekeeping, if I could ask you all if you have a cellphone with you to go ahead and turn it to vibrate or turn it off. Appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to the item E, Public Hearing. Public Hearing on the Local Control Accountability Plans. LCAP, is that what they're calling it?
LCAP.
Because we have to have an acronym.
That wouldn't be education.
So I'm going to open up the public hearing. Do I have anybody here who would like to speak on behalf of the LCAP?
Jane's going to share some information relative to...
Just quickly.
That's clear. Perfectly clear.
There we go. Okay. Can we get that into the right mode? There. Oh, that's math, sorry. Okay, here we go. So, LCAP. Local Control Accountability Plan, which goes along with the Local Control Funding Formula. We've been talking about this for almost a year now. And we're at the point where we're actually going to start implementing. So this is what it looks like. In the new funding formula, we receive really three buckets of money. We receive basic funds, which you could think of as general fund, the old general fund. We receive supplemental funds on top of the basic funds, which is generated by an unduplicated count. Which means it looks at the kids who are English language learners, low income or socio-economically disadvantaged, and foster youth, which is a very small percentage of our particular population. And they generate extra funds for those kids. Or those kids generate extra funds for the school district, is a better way of saying that. And then we still get some federal categorical funds, which are like Title I, Title II, Title III, those different federal categoricals that we get. We also have our bond funds. Yay! Thank you, Petaluma. And our parcel tax money. You'll notice that the supplemental funds are in red here, and the bond funds are in purple. You're going to see why that is in just a second. Within the LCAP, we have to address these eight areas in three big buckets. The Climate for Learning, the Pupil Achievement, and Engagement, both parent and student. Okay? You'll notice, once again, that there's purple and red here. And those are key to the major funding in these areas, that new things that we're going to be doing. Okay? So when we look at Climate for Learning, Basic Services, on the left side of the screen, these are the goals that we are setting for ourselves for the next three years, over the course of the next three years. And these are the services that we're going to be providing. Okay? So for example, maintaining the buildings and making sure we have highly qualified teachers, we're going to use basic funds for them. Those are in black. Okay? Classroom Teacher Tech Package, which we'll be talking about another time, but really getting everybody up to speed in their classrooms with projectors and document cameras and a laptop and an audio system, so that they can really begin to integrate technology into their instruction. All of those things are going to be paid for with bond funds. Okay? You can go down that list. I'm not going to read this all to you guys. You can go down that list and you can see, we're going to be spending some time on training teachers in Common Core, integrating technology training. We're going to be looking at and implementing an integrated math program, which you're going to hear a little bit more about in just a little bit, and integrated science courses. We're going to be integrating and looking at how we can get more CTE or Career Technical Education in core classes integrated together. And we're going to try to reduce our class size. Class size is going to be reduced with supplemental funds in red. Okay? Any questions there? Good. Under the Pupil Achievement bucket, we're going to be looking at upping pupil achievement across the board, but especially closing the achievement gap for those ELL students and those low-income or socio-economically disadvantaged students and our students with disabilities. We're going to particularly be looking at that. You can see that we're looking at providing, expanding A through G access for all kids, getting some yearly meetings with counselors around career counseling and that kind of thing. Intervention groupings and RTI designed for all the schools. Once again, you'll see not all these activities and goals are new. So like this one, ELL students re-dedicated within six years. That's a goal that we've had for a while. And we're doing pretty well at it. Summer School reinstated, that's with supplemental funds. Spanish teachers at McKinley and McDowell, that's with supplemental funds. So, can you get the pattern there?
When you say Spanish teachers, is that for English learners?
That's for...
For English speakers?
Yes. For both the English speakers and the Spanish speakers.
And why only those two states?
We're going to start there. Okay? And really begin to build a program that, we're going to kind of pilot it out, we'll start there. We started at McKinley already. And we're going to pilot it out to see if it's something our community is interested, number one. And then if it's something that will increase student achievement, which we believe it will. Pretty good evidence about bilingualism and the ability to use more of your brain.
What was summer school? About summer school. Who's eligible to attend summer school?
Summer school is anybody who is below what we used to call basic. So any teacher recommendation, students who are struggling in any way in the elementary and students who are in need of credit recovery in the secondary this year.
And it's four weeks?
It's four weeks for elementary and five weeks for secondary. Okay? And we're also doing a little bridge program for eighth graders going to ninth grade. Because researchers telling us in other school districts that are working on this, they're saying that that's one of the hardest transitions for kids, is that eighth to ninth grade. And that anything we can do to smooth that transition really helps. So we're going to be working on a program. Eric Bachman, who is our principal, and Stephen Owens, who's helping them, are really working on developing a really high-quality kind of bridge program for eighth to ninth grade.
For every eighth to ninth grade?
No, just select ones. Those who are struggling.
It's mostly the non-promotes.
Who are...
The art ones on the ninth grade, but they didn't successfully complete it.
It's a... I'm missing one. Fun fact on the Spanish. If you have a stroke and you are a bilingual, you will lose one language.
That's a fun fact.
That's a fun fact. So it's interesting, guys. It's one of those facts that, you know, if you're bilingual and you have a stroke that affects your language center, you will lose one language. You don't get to choose which language it is, but you will still be able to communicate in the other language.
You said McDowell for Spanish. Is that all grades or a certain grade level?
All grades. All grades. About half hour a day.
And this is also hoping to feed into the biliteracy that we're looking at at Petaluma then?
So remember, we talked about that seal of biliteracy that kids can get when they graduate? This is the beginning of that program, so that we get kids early when we know that their language is best. So we start them early and help them to become bilingual by the time they graduate from Casa Grande High School, if they follow that pathway. So it'll start at McDowell, move to McKinley, go to Petaluma, and then Casa Grande. Other questions? Okay. Last one is Engagement, and this is around parents and pupil engagement, school climate. Looking at, and a lot of these are things that we're already doing. You can see the Family Resource Center that's located at McDowell School. We have a very generous donation from the community for that. And then we're going to also use a little bit of supplementary money for that. And then under Pupil Engagement and School Climate, these are, a lot of these are goals that we have been working on for a long time and are pretty successful with. That four-year academic plan is a new goal. So what we are talking about there is that the kids sit down with the counselors in their freshman year and they develop a plan where they think they might want to go. Do they want to go to college? Are they looking at careers? And begin to build a plan to get them there, to their goal by 12th grade.
Similar to what the group was here talking to us about.
Exactly.
Probably even doing it at both high schools.
Yes. So already, they were talking about a 10-year plan. We're not quite to 10-year, we're at four. So that's something that we're going to need to be working on and evolving. So it is very similar to what Eric and David and the group, the last time we met, were talking about. Okay? We have the MFCC counselors and interns, and that's our student support program that we have been very successful with. The MFCC supervises the interns and we get a lot of counseling to our students outside of the academic counseling. So this is more marriage, family, child counseling. And then, of course, the alternative education programs and the making sure that they're well-staffed and provide a high-quality education that we want for all kids. That's what the LCAP looks like.
Did you go to the previous slide and talk about Gate?
Yes. It did.
So where'd you explain that?
So, under Other. Pupil Achievement has got two categories in it. One is Pupil Achievement, the other is an Other category. And we can choose pretty much what we want to put in there. The committee was very focused on the fact that we want, not only to make sure that we're serving the kids who are struggling, but we're also serving and supporting kids who are, whoever need a challenge. So we're looking at opening up AP access for all kids or many kids. And then also Gate students who are identified at third grade. We have the Magnet Program starting at fourth grade at McKinley. And then the Differentiation Program, I'll call it, where the kids, the parents can choose to stay at their school, their home school. And then the kids get differentiation within the regular classroom, or they can choose to go to the Magnet Program at McKinley. Okay?
Which just goes through sixth grade currently?
Goes through sixth grade right now.
Do you want to look at that sixth grade class at some point?
Yes. But in fact, we're going to, the parents are already talking to me about it.
How... Can you expand a little bit on the differential learning, where people choose to stay at their school? Is there any real, anything set?
The teachers have all been, a lot of the teachers, I can't say every teacher has been trained, but many teachers have been trained in differentiation and how to differentiate a lesson so that it's more open-ended and more interactive for the Gate kids.
I mean, I feel, this is, I'm asking only because sometimes I have conversations with parents. And I personally have felt with my children that whether it's a need to read outside their level, below the behavioral, like whatever it is, positive, maybe I would consider it a parent, like child isn't doing well, or maybe it's a negative thing. I always felt like the teachers, whether they're training Gate or not, have taken my child. But it's sometimes hard for me to explain what parents talk to me about.
It is, it's a, yeah. It's a really hard concept to identify, because it's not that they're giving more work.
Or something.
Or maybe not even different work. But it's a different response. They're expecting a different response from the child, rather than a...
Here's your Gate packet.
Here's your Gate packet. You'll fill out, read two. Everybody else is reading one book, you read three. So it's a different habit. So it's more of a response from the child and how the teacher sets up the child to respond.
Thank you.
Sure. It's a tough one.
Any other questions with Jane?
Any other questions?
No, but I wanted to point out something, that in our agenda, I don't know if you had a chance to look at the 37-page document, which she summarized beautifully in three sentences. I just wanted to comment that, you know, as the Board member on the committee, they worked really hard to take a lot of information and go through multiple iterations and really look at data and really come up with that, that you saw.
Very deeply.
Very deeply. It is a state template, but there was a lot of good work put into it. So I just want to make sure you know.
We had a committee of about 25 people, all the way from parents. Jackie over there, Jackie Goldblatt was one of the parents on there. There's Kim, Kim was on the committee. Loretta was on the committee. So we had classified people, certificated people, parents, community members, students.
Oh, yeah. High school students.
Great high school students. People really put a lot of work into it and...
And I also wanted to say that this is not, like, set in stone, that the committee will meet again next year and make changes as needed.
We'll be looking at data. Now comes, now the rubber hits the road. So these data points that we've put in here, we need to actually begin to collect the data. We'll be looking at the data and evaluating how we're progressing and then making changes based on what we're learning from the implementation.
And also what the state then decides to make changes.
Yes.
As well. And then we revisit and bring it back.
Yes. So you'll see this every single year now, for the next year, until they decide to change the formulas again. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. So that was the public hearing presentation part of it. It is a public hearing, so I'll open it up. Would anybody like to speak on this item? Mary Noah, all other questions? I will close the public hearing. And we will talk about this again in two weeks.
In two weeks, we'll be asked to approve the Local Control Accountability Plan. And there's, will be some minor modifications made. At the next meeting, we will point out any changes from tonight's plan to the next plan for approval.
And those get posted, Steve, so everybody...
They're on the website. We're keeping the current plan on the website. And we will continue to do that, so that when that goes to the Board will be available, both in the agenda and on the website in the events deck.
Well, I was not expecting a presentation, so that was a pleasant surprise. All right, so let's go to E2, Public Hearing on the 2014-2015 Budget. And I will open up a public hearing for that. And not seeing it, I am expecting that there is no presentation on that.
No presentation on that. You have to answer your questions.
Opening the public hearing on the budget. Taking anybody that wants to speak on the budget right now. Let everybody jump up. All right. Public hearing is on the budget. $65 million. Money. All right. So we're going to move on to Item F, which is the adoption and approval of the agenda. I have one thing that I wanted to move, and then we also have an issue with the minutes. So I would like to propose to you that we not consider approval of the minutes made in 2017-2014, because for whatever reason, none of us were able to read it on Agenda Online.
The link just in for it, thank you.
In the interest of accuracy and the fact that we should probably be able to read something when it's not approved, let's not do that tonight. And we'll just double approve it, or we'll just...
Move it.
Move it on to the 24th. I would like to move, for just a slight discussion, Item M3, which is Business, the Annual Agreement for Normal Authorization of School Facilities Consultants to a whole item. Other than that, I had no other, I'm not aware of any other changes. Does anybody else have anything else they would propose?
No.
And I would accept a motion to do that. Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. So we're skipping G. We're going to go right on to the best part of the meeting, Item H. And for the presentation of the recognition of the upgrade of the Parent Volunteer Committee. Will Steve lead us?
Yes.
I would like to turn that over to you to keep massive amounts of praise.
Thank you for having me. Scott and Jackie come forward. Michelle is unable to join us today. But last winter, the Board took action to put a major before the voters. And as part of the requirement of law, as soon as the Board takes that action, the district cannot campaign or come out in favor of it. It can only share facts in regards to what it means to the district. So we had volunteers from the community. Scott as the president of the Upgrade Petalum City Schools Campaign. Jackie was the treasurer. There's two times, Treasurer Secretary? Or just... Requires the people on the campaign, but under state law. So, and then Michelle was the Assistant Treasurer. Aiding on this. They, these three met numerous times. Scott went out and anybody who received the campaign materials saw a list of endorsements. All those endorsements were part of Scott's efforts in working with many, many groups and individuals throughout the community. They raised over $70,000.
$62,200?
$62,200 for the campaign to pass the majors. And we were very successful. I would like to have them share with you some of their efforts as well. But we're here tonight, this is a express art appreciation.
I took deposits, I filed reports.
First, thank you for the vote of confidence to, you know, support this school. It's been a passion of mine. And as Steve well knows, I'm like a pit bull. When I grab onto an issue, I don't usually let go. But I learned a ton. And what was really cool is learning a lot about our community. And we live in a really special place. And I've told many people that, at the end of the day, every time I drove into Petaluma, I knew that there was this baseline value system that we all shared. And it was our kids, which was really a cool thing. Whether your kids went to a private school or a public school, the resounding answer was that people wanted to support our kids. They want to support our schools. They believe in what's happening. And I never thought I'd be one out there asking for taxes and paying more money and bonds, but it was very easy to get behind and the voters spoke and they believed it too. So it's great opportunity.
And we'll have certificates of appreciation for them. I thought they were coming on as a press group.
Steve was...
Yes. Signed by the board president to share with you.
Virtual copy of the document.
If you wanted to wait around for a few minutes, we'll actually present it to you this evening. But again, the two of them took their time and effort to support our schools. And in reality, the two of them are always taking their time and effort to support their schools. Jackie's been a very active member of PTA at, for Emily, when she was, her kids were at Petaluma. Always an officer and President and Treasurer of that organization, during her tenure there. She's been part of the Superintendent's Lay Advisory Council as well. And so has Michelle, bringing, you know, taking time each month to share input and receive information from the school district to share with the community. Very much appreciated. Scott's been a member of the foundation at Mary Collins School at Cherry Valley. He's been on the Pedalum Education Foundation. Very active in the community. And, you know, both bring... So I think it's quite...
Just keep talking, Steve. I'm going to look at you a little bit.
And Michelle and Jackie were on the district leadership team that worked this last year.
On the LCAP.
On the LCAP. Once we get a hold of you guys, we...
Well, yeah, they were very active people and, you know, very little arm-twisting to get them to take this on. And again, once Scott got on it, I was amazed at everybody he contacted on our behalf and the support that he was able to find throughout the community.
I was impressed of him getting voters and putting them in the bus and driving them.
Your old people carrying you in.
No, I've known Scott for a while. It surprised me that it was successful. Jackie, you've worked with it before. You guys were a great team. I heard positive, it was all class. I was very, you know, in awe of the whole thing. And you didn't have much time, which people don't appreciate. There was not much time to ramp this thing up. So to ramp it up and get over 66% on one and 64.5 on the other, I thought was a real statement of how great a job you guys did. So I applaud you and appreciate you, and I look forward to coming up with some more projects.
10 weeks.
Yeah. 10 weeks, okay.
Put together an incredible campaign.
Yeah. And I would just finish by saying, I can't believe how many of my right-wing Howard Jarvis friends you converted, which is a huge...
Huge.
So, but in all seriousness, I mean, please know that for the rest of your community involved, the rest of your time, what you did, because it wouldn't have happened without you, without a doubt. What you did will leave a permanent, very positive mark on this district for everybody. Our kids, our families, the community. It's a huge, huge deal. Folks are really excited. And you should own that and you should wear that. And I hope you're real proud. Because you should.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to our second presentation. Jane, you want to go ahead and take lead?
We have a team here tonight of another group of people who have been working very hard on getting us ready to upgrade our mathematics and align our mathematics instruction with Common Core. So we have Emily Donegan come on up. We have Jamie Q from Casa Grande High School. And we have Jim McQ from Petaluma High School. And these guys have all been working on the Math Committee.
No, you have to go farther. You have to come in.
I like sitting at the back of them.
This is part of the 712 Math Committee that has been working on organizing and designing the new math curriculum aligned to Common Core and our Integrated Math Program that we thought you might want to hear a little bit about. So, here we go. Emily.
So Jane's talked to you guys about the standard shift before, so I just wanted to quickly go over the key shifts with Common Core themselves are a greater focus on fewer topics, coherence, linking things, linking different topics across grade levels, and then an increase in rigor for students. So when we've been aligning our classes 712, that's what our focus has been.
So why change to an integrated program? This is something that some school districts are doing, some school districts are not doing under Common Core. We had a long discussion, probably over a year worth of discussion, and decided that we will change to an integrated math program. So dropping Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II, trig, math, all that. Going to Math I, Math II, and Math III. And I'll let these guys talk a little bit more about that and what that means. But these are some of the reasons. And it's really about interconnection and making connections and applying those connections so that math becomes real for kids. So that Algebra, Geometry supports Algebra. And they understand that when you build a house and you make those studs in the roof and all of that kind of thing, that you're actually integrating Algebra and Geometry there. So that's really what it's all about.
And the biggest difference, which we're excited about in the junior high, is we actually have eighth-grade standards in math for the first time. Eighth grade in the old system was Algebra I. Our current, the eighth-grade standards are Connected K-A... Our current, the eighth grade standards are Connected K eight, which is fabulous. So they continues that focus and that rigor and following those few topics from elementary to junior high. There is a lot of Algebra One in eighth grade standards. So they're still getting the Algebra One, but they're also getting some geometry. They're getting other topics as well to help link it all together.
And Jim's going to talk about that a little bit.
Why the change? Integrated math is not new. It's been around for actually fifteen, twenty years or more. Not many people have done it in terms of districts or schools because they're kind of alone. Kid moves into that district or moves out, they're kind of in no man's land when they make that transition. We're choosing to do it this time because there's a big change to what is Algebra One. Algebra One now compared to Algebra One Common Core are not equal. Simply put, take the first five chapters of your Algebra One book. That's now eighth grade math, part of their curriculum. We're doing fewer things, but doing them in greater depth. That's part of the change. Math One is simply picking up Algebra One and then starts to integration, sprinkles some geometry in throughout. All of us went through that Algebra One, geometry, Algebra Two sequence. Geometry provided a great year off from algebra. And that's why a lot of people really struggled with geometry, or Algebra Two later, was because it'd been fifteen months since the last time you really did any algebra. Integrated math has algebra throughout, so the sequence continues. There are no breaks. And that seamless transition from Math Eight to Math One is, Math Eight has been bumped up now. It has a significant algebra chunk in it. And going into the Math One for us will be a very, hopefully seamless thing that happens.
Okay, so we're going to toss a little bit now of what, oh, okay, just a little side. So we started exploring how we're going to, what materials and instructional resources we're going to use for this. And we wanted to pilot some things last year or next year. And when we started exploring that, we found out that if we piloted the one-to-one device program in eighth grade, we can pilot these materials for free. But if we didn't, if we used the paper-based things, then it would cost a lot of money. So we looked around, looked at the resources that we have available and decided we can do this. We can pilot the one-to-one device program with eighth grade. The teachers are really excited about this. A lot of the eighth grade teachers are really excited because all of the eighth graders are going to get a Chromebook at the beginning of next year, the fourteen, fifteen school year. That means that the English teachers will be able to use it, the math teachers will be able to use it, the history teachers will be able to use it. And so we're actually going to be training the eighth grade teachers in integrating how to use our one-to-one device and integrate those devices into their classrooms. They'll be running a little pilot for us because as you know, in the fifteen, sixteen school year, that will happen for everybody. Okay?
Do you think that'll be a both junior high?
Both junior highs.
Okay.
Okay, so here's the sequence. These guys are going to help.
So we currently, in the current school year, well, actually, it's not. We're done with that school year. We piloted Math Seven in the seventh grade level. We called the pre-algebra still because we hadn't changed the course name. But what the students did was Math Seven work, the new Common Core work. So this year for fourteen, fifteen, we're going to be adding an advanced Math Seven class for our students who are not quite Algebra One, but need that extra rigor. It's going to go more in-depth. It won't have as much remediation in it. And then we're going to be piloting Math Eight for the first time.
In fifteen, sixteen, we're going to be adding, and you're going to see some different colors here because final decisions have still not been made, okay? So we're still in the throes of some decision-making. So that red means that we're still in the throes of decision-making here. We are possibly going to add a Math Seven-Eight Compacted, which means that you don't skip things. In the new Common Core standards, you don't skip anything because the concepts are all really, really important. We're doing fewer, but we're doing them deeper. So you can't skip things. So what you do is you compact them. So we're compacting, that's a possible acceleration point. And Jim's going to talk about acceleration in just a minute. Acceleration point where we compact seven and eight, we add a Math Eight Advanced, and then we start with Math One for the very first time in the fifteen, sixteen school year in ninth grade. Okay?
They would be tracking those kids that started in this school year that took.
That's exactly right.
They would have taken Math Seven as a seventh grader.
Right.
Right, right.
They're taking Math.
And they'll be the first group in.
And they'll be the first group in Math One.
Now, are you going to insist that they do the building blocks and then Math Seven all the way through? Or are you going to allow some to test out and be drawn in?
So you can't test out a Math Seven. What the Compactive class that we're still figuring out, trying to, how it works, is you would do, instead of doing seventh grade in one year, you do it in six months. And you'd start the first part of eighth grade. And then you would finish up eighth grade and compacted eight, Math One. And then you would do Math One compacted in eighth grade. So you'd be doing three years of curriculum in two.
Okay?
So that would, this is a class that we're looking at right now at Kennelworth. Approximately seven percent of our incoming seventh graders go into Algebra One. So we're talking about your elite, elite kids who need to move at a faster pace. But we are offering that advanced class for your students who need a little bit more rigor, but are not at that point yet. Because that class is going to be very heavy on home-based activities. Because you're trying to do a year's worth, two years' worth of curriculum in three.
So Jim, why don't you talk about acceleration?
Three, two, does that sound like?
Yeah.
One of our concerns is acceleration. That we've had for now a number of years. Kids coming in, the seventh graders starting Algebra One. A more traditional model for the last fifteen, twenty years has been Algebra One at eighth grade. And then prior to that, something that still exists is that we could accelerate kids actually in high school. And they would double up taking geometry and Algebra Two at the same time. Because remember, geometry was that year off, so they could do that. That number of students who've been doing that over the years has shrunk. We have maybe in a good year, a handful of kids doing that at Pedalville High. Most times it's two or three at the most. But whether we were moving to the integrated curriculum or moving to the new Common Core, Algebra One, geometry, Algebra Two, we would still be in the same place for Maths, for seventh and eighth grade. That the rigor and the topics have bumped up. And it really means that there's not enough skill set coming from sixth grade for that kid to make that leap now going forward.
Yeah, there's just not a section you can just skip and say, oh, I just skipped a, you know, six months of Spanish class. Now I don't know how to conjugate any verbs. I'll go jump into the next level. I mean, you can't do that.
So we're looking at the acceleration piece. My concern is we're making decisions as kids come into seventh grade about acceleration. That means that what if they are, you know, mature a little bit later, where's their opportunity to get to the higher level classes that I teach? When are they going to get to that? For stats? So what are some paths that we can do to create that? One, by us implementing this one at a time. If you go back to the one before, notice, Jim, Algebra One is gone. You see geometry. If you go to the next one now, geometry is gone. There's just the Algebra Two. Meaning the kids who are in Algebra One this next year are the last group that are going to follow that traditional path. And then the following year, we would be on to Math Three is there. And Algebra Two for the ninth graders. No, that shouldn't be there.
That should not be there.
Yeah, we need to take that off. Okay.
All right, because there's no more Algebra Two. They would be on to trig, math analysis, or stats. What we're looking at is what are the ways we can accelerate older students? One is that students from Math Seven may be able to go to the Math Eight-One combined. There's also discussions at the state level around doing an advanced program in Math Seven and Eight and then having the kids actually skip Math One. Because the Math Eight is so rich. But we haven't seen that, so we're not sure just how that fits. Another thing that is offered through the state is what are called enhanced courses, call it an honors course. So you are doing more things. The idea is that if a student does the enhanced courses, they would not need the pre-calculus course to go to calculus. So a freshman could do Math One Enhanced, Math Two Enhanced. This is sophomore, Math Three Enhanced as a junior and be ready to do calculus as a senior. Taking out that fourth course, math analysis, trigonometry that we currently offer and allowing them to have those skills being taught in those enhanced courses. Yeah.
And do you think, Jim, that Math Seven is going to allow for some of the variances of coming in from the elementary schools? Because, you know, there's a lot of feeder schools, right, to our junior highs? And it seems to be like to do that, you'd have to have a pretty much parity and with their math instruction, you have to jump right into Math Seven?
Well, we're hoping that the fact that there's some standards that they're going to meet that.
From shape's added math, sort of quick launcher, will it have some ability?
Math Six is, I mean, the program is six, seven, eight.
The program actually now starts.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah. It's kind of K five, six, eight, and then we have our secondary.
That was, from what I've heard, it was kind of a dis. Yeah, they've had a long time.
What we're hoping is that we can have some articulation with the feeder schools to have them kind of be on board with that sixth grade program, that they're at the same place.
And you'll see that in our last slide. So Jamie's going to talk a little bit about this one. This is just a little piece of data from first semester just to take a quick look at what the kids looked like who were accelerated.
Yeah, so, you know, are accelerating kids district-wide. Up there, two-hundred-and-thirteen students that started in Algebra Two as either a ninth grader or a tenth grader. And that's really moving along pretty well. Those are the kids that will get to calculus or the upper level classes. And as you can see, hopefully, those, your best students should be getting As and Bs and a few Cs. And ninety-six percent of them did. And then there was four percent that got a D. And out of that group, none of them failed. But once again, we're talking, we're not talking about a normal ranges student. We're talking about our brightest math students at the schools. And so the normal, the normal distribution in Algebra Two doesn't work like that.
So what this says is that we want to keep, that's why we're being careful about the acceleration. We know we need to do something because we do have this group of kids. But this is not your normal math kid. This isn't me. This is not Jane. It may have been Jim or Jamie, but it wasn't Jane. So Jane was in that other group. She started in Math Seven, then went to Math Eight, maybe Math One, and that was fine for her. But we do know that we need these other points of acceleration. And maybe Jane would have caught on fire at the end of Math Eight. And like Jim said, we want another, we want to look at other places, places where we could accelerate a child who would catch on fire.
Yeah, and this, this top group does, and they perform, they perform well. The only thing I've noticed as a teacher dealing with these, like quite often you get kids that start off in Algebra Two honors as freshmen and can't handle it. And it's nice that they have the regular path that they can, they can drop back. And usually they can drop back into the algebra, normal Algebra Two. And there's also some of the kids that maybe shouldn't have been necessarily accelerated at the middle school level. And we're just in a little over their heads when they get, when they get to us. So now we have the honors Algebra Two, and there's regular Algebra Two where they can drop into. And it's just, you know, the rigor, just a little, little less, little less topics that are covered. But with these kids, yeah, you want to have these kids in this group. And these are the ones that we're going to be accelerating and worried about acceleration for. And out of this group, if the kid wants to join this group and they want to get up there, say they were just regular as, as a freshman and wanted to get their sophomore, now with integrated math going Math One, Math Two, Math Three. We were talking that you could possibly do a regular Math One. And then if the kid did great in Math One, one of your top students, then they could be suggested to go into the enhanced Math Two. And now they're on the path where that they do enhanced Math Two and enhanced Math Free, they won't have to worry about that trig class. And then they can go into calculus. So even though they were on the regular path all the way up through ninth grade, they could make the jump starting their tenth grade year and actually get to, to that. Like this year, I have four or five students that I probably would have suggested. I have three of them that are next year going to take Algebra and Geometr, I mean, geometry and Algebra Two the same year. And for whatever reason, they got pegged into the, into the wrong hole early. And they're very, very good math students. And this is where those students would make the jump when they got to high school, when it was coming up. As a point of interest, it stands now, you do Algebra Two. Do you have to test or have a grade minimum to get into the next level? To get into trig, calculus, or stats?
I'm glad, could you go back to the grade thing? What, what we look at for kids coming from the junior high is to go into geometry, Algebra Two, they have to have a B or better. Part of that is because they, they do a different grading system. They give a little bit more credit for homework, less for tests. So we kind of raise the bar a little bit. In general, it's a C or better. So as I look at that information up there, I'm seeing, okay, at the end of the first semester, ninety-six percent of the kids had an A, B, or C. Well, there's four percent that didn't. These are our best kids. We already have, you know, one out of twenty-five is in tussling it already. C is another concern. If I stay at a C, I lock into the next class, C or better, as the least prepared student for that next class. And for a student who's been accelerated, why are they in that boat? Why are they in so, you know, were they accelerated too soon? There's a maturity of thought in terms of just development that some students have. They can crank numbers, but boy, we get into those variables and things aren't, you know, it's abstract, what's going on. So we're hoping to see that, you know, three out of four are getting an A or B. These are our best kids. What about the one out of four? What, you know, we're setting up a kid to struggle, and that's a concern for me. These kids like math, they're good at it, and all of a sudden, they're not.
They're nothing, yeah.
And that's why we want multiple entrance points for acceleration because, you know, you look at the brain chemistry and the brain maturity. Abstract thought in junior high, let's be honest, how many junior high kids can actually do an abstract thought? And they're just comprehending that idea and learning that. And so they might know how to, you know, do math whiz, can answer all these questions, can do the math in their head. But you put complicated math, this abstract in front of them, it's not going to, it's not going to click until they mature, until their brain, until their brain grows and more of those connections are made.
So when you talk about multiple entry points, expand on that. How, is it just strictly grade-based? Hey, if you are this, then you have the opportunity? Is it parental involvement? Is it a recommendation from a group of teachers?
That's our next steps. So, one of them.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have, it's get laid out. We'll be perfectly honest. Because of, once again, the bumping up of what is being done at the middle school and then our, the reconfiguration for us in terms of Math One, Two, and Three compared to the old, it's really not a big change. We're still teaching the same stuff, just maybe doing it a little bit differently, a little bit different.
Math, yeah, different order is exactly what it is. But same math has been taught for thousands of years and it's still the same stuff.
One of our big concerns as a group has been where, where does the acceleration happen? We do want the kids to get the higher level math. The kids, the parents want to get the higher level math. So we need to create the paths. And a path can't just happen when they enter seventh grade. It might be when they enter eighth grade. There might be something. Maybe when they enter ninth, and maybe again, something as a tenth graders, as Jamie mentioned. Hey, you did Math One, you seem pretty strong. Let's try that Math Two Enhanced and see if we can get you there. So there's, what we're looking at is to create multiple opportunities for kids to accelerate. And that's one of our concerns. The, you know, the curriculum, we're playing with it. We're looking at what is the curriculum that's kind of interesting? That we may, as a district, for the first time, come up with a, how should we say, agreed upon. a, how should we say, agreed upon set of instructional materials, district wide.
That would be exciting.
And in math.
The clarification, acceleration points is part of what we're doing, the articulation is something we talked about. Something we haven't talked about is intervention strategies and programs. As mentioned, algebra one is no longer equal to algebra one. However, that algebra one or math one course is still the state requirement for graduation. It's now not a hurdle, it's becoming more of a high jump for some of our students.
Especially the second year of math that students are supposed to get through to get their diploma. There, where before they would have some, you know, a lot of them never had to do geometry. With math one and math two, you're going to get algebra one, geometry, and some algebra two.
Who was a stat?
So it's, it's a higher bar now. And unfortunately, not everybody is a math person.
These guys would like that.
Yeah, it would be great, but they're not. And we need to have something else for those, math one is, is going to be a pretty, it's going to be a challenge for a lot of kids. And math two is maybe beyond that.
So have you been discussing, you know, business math and other types of math?
Well, those are, I mean, we have current things in place. We have business math, we have geometry applications, which is a kind of a softball geometry course. But those are, you know, do we, do we have math two applications? I don't, I don't know.
So that's what, that's.
That's part of what we need to look at and create. So we have, because not all our kids are going to be on the college track. Not all our kids are even, are going, you know, have an easy through math two. We have kids who are going to be just working their tail off to try a bit over the math one or algebra one hurdle. Because it's now.
It's higher.
Yeah, so.
Do you have that track?
Yeah.
Track groups are.
So that's why we need to look at creating a secondary course.
And you will have some college track kids who aren't math students.
Oh, yeah.
Only who are going to excel in something, but it won't be math.
Right now, those, those are the kids that, that right now are, it's a battle for them. They're juniors and seniors in algebra two and they are happy when they get through algebra two. Because it is, it's not, it's not an easy class. And one of the things we're hoping is that the integrated math, keeping them doing algebra every year makes that transition easier for them, as opposed to taking that year off for geometry where you're doing less of it and then trying to come back in. When they step into an algebra two classroom now, they're, we expect them to remember everything they did 15 months ago. All the formulas, all how did, how everything works. Because we're supposed to teach all this new stuff that's a lot harder.
Now, colleges would recognize the math one.
Oh, yeah.
They do right now.
They do right now.
They do under the current format. And the new one is simply the, the bumping up a little bit. So those will be recognized as the first three courses of the college prep sequences, just like before.
And then what about, it sounds like teachers are already sort of teaching this way anyway, so it's not going to involve a lot of extra teacher training or?
It's, it's gonna, we've been doing teacher training for the last year and a half with our teachers regarding the changes and bringing in the standard mathematical practices and that sort of thing. But there will be continued training needed, especially with new curriculum.
And it's still math two. It's still the same topics, it's just the order of how they're brought in is different. Like you might teach a section on a particular type of algebra, and then you'll go to the geometry section that uses that application. So then you're still using the same idea. And then more algebra and then some more geometry and then it just keeps those things cycling. It's not, they're not changing the common core math, doesn't change math. It's trying to bring in more examples from real world things where you use the math, trying to use those more often. But it's still just math. It's still the same stuff that was created thousands of years ago that, that we use all the time.
Well, some people.
Well, some people.
Those are kids.
Well, I mean, there's two things that teacher training needs to address. One is using the new instructional materials. Whatever program or, or thing that's chosen. And then two, for many, it's going to be a big change in terms of how you run and teach in the classroom. Common core in general is changing the dynamics of how you teach, how you arrange your classroom.
I was going to say, like a math, in a math classroom, it's not teacher in the front room lecturing, kids in individual desks. You see a lot more pairing, you see a lot more kids talking to each other, a lot more conversations happening, explaining the math to other students. That it's, you know, we call it argument, even though in junior high, we don't like to use the word argument because they're so good at it. But they have to argue why they solved the problem the way they did, and they'd be able to articulate that so that they can, others can learn from that and have those mathematical conversations.
Does this, in math, does that do away with them with AP and honors and those kind of distinctions? Because the accelerated math you got off of these kids.
Well, I would think that enhanced courses would be the honors. AP is still AP. And there's probably still a need for us to have the pre-calculus course, the trig math analysis. So I don't see those going away. The upper level ones aren't going to be changed significantly.
What are the AP math classes? Statistics?
Statistics and calculus, and there's the two different levels of calculus.
And there's A, B, right?
There's AB and BC.
What about current math textbooks?
Current math textbooks, that's a, that's kind of a.
Yes.
I was just looking at my, my calculus textbooks. Newton is, as mentioned, you know, Newton was around 300 years ago, so we haven't changed it a lot, but our textbooks are 10 years old that we're using for these classes.
So for next year's curriculum?
So for eighth grade, that's why we're going one to one, because we're adopting the online version of the text, we're not piloting or adopting, the online version of the textbook for them to try. And then as we move, as we add the different class, we will be piloting materials for them to use.
For all eighth graders?
All eighth graders.
So you should go?
Nice question.
And then what about parent education? This is going to throw some parents.
So that's something that we are going to be, that's the next step, that's a next step that we didn't get onto the slide, is that we are going to need to do big parent education around all of this as we move away from that sequence that we all went through and loved and hugged. We're going to need to really help people understand what we're doing here.
And this is something that's done internationally.
Yeah, in fact, that's how it's spot everywhere except.
Except here. So I think that if we can get that conversation out.
Well, there's also a significant number of districts statewide who are making the move at this time as well.
And within our county.
That's all they do too.
Yeah, so we're not alone, and that's one of the conversation or talking points we had was, or are we going to be the only ones doing this? And it became very clear that no, there's many, many school districts up and down the state and throughout the country making the same move.
Lots of changes for parents, common core, math differences.
I just have one final question slash request as you move along. When it comes to the acceleration criteria, and I'll say this very selfishly, that I would really appreciate if you would really focus on the criteria used by all schools. It's the same across the board, it's very clear. It's to whatever extent can be not subjected, because as you well know, us parents are horrible about making sure that our children have every opportunity known and that we slithen with nothing, and you know where I'm going with that. That, that, you know, the phone calls that we give, weirdly enough, are those phone calls that my child is getting ace out of, an opportunity to take. And we also push our children farther than you know we should.
Well, I would hope that our criteria is performance based. That's what we've, when I taught at Kenilworth 100 years ago or so, when we looked at place kids, we looked at their performance in our class, how did they do on tests? And we did also an assessment, a pre-algebra assessment. None of those individually was ever going to make or break a kid. We looked at the whole package. And what we look for is, well, did somebody do well in one thing, but not in the others? That always causes us to take a second look. Conversely, if somebody did poorly in one of them, one of the areas, but not the others, that would also cause us to take a second look. Because it was, there was a performance that we were looking for to be recommended for algebra one or recommended for geometry or recommended for certain, back in the day it was math A.
Well, I absolutely love hearing you say that it's heavily the site decision, not all these things like you can parent them to DM you and push your kid ahead, because when those kids fail, we just talked about math, once you do, you get sideways in math that you really are.
Like I said, that one out of four that are ninth and 10th grader struggling in algebra two, that's a huge concern. That's a red flag saying that, that number's way too high.
We always want us best for our children, but like I say, oftentimes, most times, you, you tend to know a little bit better than we know what actually is best for our kids. And so I would really encourage you to think in more, brighten the criteria. Anybody else?
That's wonderful.
Great. Quick break, two minutes, anybody that needs to go home or we're glad to go home. Please take this opportunity, we would prefer you stay, but we want to give you an opportunity right here to. All right, we are back. Moving on to item. I, comments from the public, I have one public comment. What's the title of my talk?
Well, why don't you tell us?
Okay. Thanks.
Deal five.
Thank you. I'm here to address our school board members who are currently breaking California law and their serious consequences for breaking California law, but first I'm going to give you some good news. This is an iPad. This is an iPad that used to be the most dangerous educational product sold because it required many schools to put in wired networks, they thought, in order to be able to get internet access to the iPad. The very good news is that Apple Computer had a worldwide developer conference, and they demonstrated that you can put a wire in the bottom of your iPad and connect it to the internet. You no longer have to use this wirelessly. I will send a link of exactly how to do it to every one of the board members, to Mr. Bowman and to Mike Cole, so you can buy the equipment necessary to make the use of the iPad safe for our students. All the other Chromebooks that you've purchased can already use a $12 adapter to be able to use the wired networking in order to make it safe for our students. Why is that important? Well, I also met Mr. Martin Blank. Martin Blank is the author of a wonderful book called Overpowered: What Science Tells Us About the Dangers of Cellphones and Other Wi-Fi in Each Device. Martin holds two PhDs and has done 30 years of work in this field, and I'm going to read from his book right now. Protecting Children. Children must be more strongly protected against EMF exposures than adults. Accordingly, all the considerations and precautions mentioned in the previous chapter apply even more to children. While you should minimize the time you spend talking on your cell phone, children should avoid them altogether. If children should not use cell phones, neither should they spend times in areas covered by Wi-Fi networks. These are certainly can be replaced by ethernet connections that are well worth any additional cost. The good news is we've determined that the wiring to put an ethernet network in for all students to have one-to-one connectivity is less expensive than the wireless solutions that you guys are trying to put into the net, into our schools. Just do the math. Children go to school about six hours a day, five days a week, for about 36 weeks a year, for approximately 12 years, until the child reaches college where they will be exposed to ubiquitous Wi-Fi. This equates to 12,960 hours of exposure to Wi-Fi and microwave radiation for each child by the time the child graduates from high school. This is not safe. This is also not compliant with California Education Code. I sent a cease and desist letter to every board member, Mr. Bowman, and the principal of Valley Vista. I have the proof that they received the cease and desist letter. I asked them to respond within a week. I have gotten no response. I will read portions of the letter to Mr. Sanderson. Dear Mr. Sanderson, I'm asserting my constitutional fundamental parental right to the care and control of the continued health and well-being of my child and my child's access to public education. Your order to stop the activities, this cease and desist order is to inform you that your persistent actions including but not limited to violating California Public Records Act Sections 6250 to 6276, California Education Code Section 51101, Paragraph A, Section 7, and violating California Education Code Sections 32060, 32065 are unbearable and are not in compliance with California law. By choosing to power on and operate any antenna in any wireless router, any antenna in any wireless access point, or any antenna in any other electronic devices that are designed to transmit data wirelessly in schools that educate students in grades K through six, you are not complying with California Education Code 51101, Section A, Paragraph A, Section 7, and Sections 32060, 32065. Your order to stop such activities immediately as your actions are violating California state law and the rights of we, the people, your students and their parents, each of whom is a sovereign flesh and blood human being who enjoys the inalienable rights stated and guaranteed by the California Constitution and the US Constitution. The letter goes on to quote the relevant parts of the California and the US Constitution, both of which guarantee safety in our schools. You're not following the law. I've given you a week to please comply with the law. I gave you the sections of the law a month ago. You've had plenty of time to review it. I'm asking you please to comply with California law and to turn off all the antennas as stated in this letter and start figuring out how we can safely educate our students with 21st century skills using all the wonderful equipment they already own in an intelligent way. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the only public comment card that I had. We'll move on to sports and activities, of course, wants the school board members, and I have a list. There were some fabulous graduations that we were very lucky to attend. I thought everyone did a beautiful job. I want to thank principals, parents, students, everybody that set all that up. It was, it was always the best three days of the year, at least for me. So any comments on graduation that we particularly wanted to do?
Just that it was very neat to see from sixth grade promotion all the way to high school graduation, and it was longer than three days.
Oh, that's right.
It was about a week and a half. Those were the major ones. But just, it was a very, very, very busy time. It ends tonight with a few events a day for many, many days.
What else? I especially, although I like them all, I will profess that I very much every year enjoy the alternative ed graduation over the kids. To me, it's one of those feel-good moments. So it was very good. So let's see what else. We had a bond passage party that I saw was, I attended that one gladly. Was captured on the front page or something.
It was very nice.
And the IE Sonoma.
Event.
Oh, yeah.
IE Sonoma event, I went up with Steve, and there were tons of people from our school district, which was great, and past and present. Karen McGahey, Dr. Martin, and all kinds of people, and great speakers, and it was a very motivating day. It was really nice of them. Steve has some more.
And then I almost attended the San Rosa Junior College breakfast.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Those were always.
Very enjoyable. And it's nothing better than watching one superintendent bag on another superintendent.
I'll get Frank back.
It was a pleasure to see Frank there. So that was always good too. All right, very good. You had something you wanted to add on to?
Just that it was a very busy time.
Okay, that would be item J. So let's go to K, approval of the consent agenda. I will take the most.
So who?
I was in favor of the consent agenda. Opposed. Consent agenda passes, five through a two. Let's see, so let's move on to what I had asked to hold, and that would be the annual agreement renewal authorization from School Facilities Consultant.
Sorry.
Okay, so just discuss it quick and then I just want to throw out a comment.
So School Facilities Consultant is a firm in Sacramento that we use whenever we're going for state funding to make sure that our application is in order, meeting all the state requirements. Last year, I don't believe we use their services, it's quite likely this year we won't, but when we have a question or an issue that comes up. But when we have a question or an issue that comes up about our eligibility, we, we go to them and have them proof our submittals so that we get our appropriate place in line for state bonds.
And so for lack of better terminology, directors not, but these are the people that help us get through the system.
Yes.
Fair way to say it.
And what the governor's desire is to make the system easier. And that would be a great, great move on his part and the state's part to allow school districts to easily access the money they're entitled to based on modernization, growth and needs.
So I think my only comment really was that as part of the bond piece and the conversations with the community had by everybody, really, I know one of the things that was thrown out was the, the promise of efficiency and the promise that we will take these precious dollars, although there are a lot of them at one time, they go away very quickly. And, and so I just wanted to, to reconfirm that commitment that we will, including using these consultants, be very stingy with the money.
Yes, really.
Yeah, and so to the extent that we need to use these people in order to make business go faster, that's good. To the extent that we don't need to use them because they are kind of expensive.
Or to get matching funds.
Or to get matching funds, then we will. And that we would certainly, I'm sure as a board by speaking for myself, be greatly in favor of Governor Brown's attempts to make the system so much easier so we don't end up with $60,000 on baseball accounts. Everyone was.
I agree, Troy, Troy, most of the feedback I got, people want to see that used for tangible infrastructure, not consultants, not all these soft costs that seem to be built into every project. And I'm wondering, Steve, if, you know, I get the whole on Budsman or, you know, this, this kind of independent contractor approach to navigating our, our, you know, what do you want to call it? The morass is the state bureaucracy. But is, is this something that we could get help with through SCO or through people that won't charge us that, that know this better than, say, we do?
Well, yes, SCO does, does not have help in regards to the building process and getting through, through the state.
You're not talking about educational process, you're just talking strictly about getting state approval for a given design or?
It's, yeah, following the state requirements for getting your application in order.
Can't we put that on the contractors themselves? I had a big bid.
It's actually pre-contract, I mean, it's.
Probably shouldn't know how to get it approved, right?
It's pre-contract, basically it's when we're going to the state and saying, look, we're going to grow by 700 kids over the next five years, we're going to need another school. So we have to fill out their forms to do that. If you turn it around and hired a staff, kept a staff person on, on staff to be able to do that, there's going to be times when they're really busy and times when they're not busy, but the cost is going to be greater than on that rare occasion when we're ready to put together a draft, send it to them, or actually provide them with information, have them put together the draft, send it back, we review a check and sign it and submit it to the state.
So it's like having in-house counsel or outside, yeah, outside.
Correct.
Is there ever been any kind of discussion, I don't know, you have like resi, right? So everybody grouped together, joined powergram and has there ever been any thought about doing that with something like this?
Well, cash is as close as you can, you're basically California school housing is where you send people to get the training and they have courses where they will train your staff. But as you know, we have been without a facility manager for most of 10 years now. Um, and it's fallen on the chief business official and superintendent to, to do that work. So, you know, we're not, in all the areas that we're responsible for, we're not concentrating on that. We're using outside consultants.
Interesting.
But like I said, we haven't, we didn't use them last year, probably won't use them this year. But when we got the CTE, a great example of their uses, they helped us get the CTE building that, the Arts, Media and Entertainment Building on the Pelham High School campus is a great example of their support, which was an unusual application that where it really materializes into a tangible product.
Gotcha. I, I just wanted to throw out the, the honor commitment that we will be very, very stingy. Like you said, judicious, I'm going with stingy. Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Passes purchase orders and a list of expenditures. Uh, do I have anybody that wants to sit out of either of those, or conflicts of interest?
Let me just total check, I think I marked. Purchase order, I think, because it was a really small list this time, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with purchase orders with expenditures I do, Troy, so I'll pass on that one, but I can.
Purchase orders, Mike's okay, expenditures. You're good on both. Okay, so I'll take a motion to.
Second.
Oh, wait, you can't take mine at a time.
Purchase orders.
Thank you for trying that.
Actually, Troy, take it back, I have to recuse myself.
On both? Okay, uh, so purchase orders, a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And one, we're standing, four, one.
I abstain here.
And then a list of expenditures, same deal, we got a motion over here, second over there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And Mike, you abstain. Operating agreement ratification between Pelham and Joint Union High School District and the Pelham Health Centers for Pelham School Health Centers Project at Casa Grande High School. I'll take a motion.
Second.
And who's going to take that?
So I will take that one. So we've been working with the health centers, you know, to create the two centers. We have the one on the San Antonio campus that was done last summer. They've been excellent to work for, they have a great project manager, they've been able to do the projects through DSA. We met with them last week with the principal to go through their schedule. So tonight, we're recommending entering into the agreement by which that facility will be on place if they stayed the schedule, which they did last time, for the start of the school year at Casa Grande Campus. It's be a, in addition to not only the campus but to the community after hours and in the summer as available for health services to the, that portion of Pelham City, Pelham community.
And facilities?
The facility will be another modular facility coming onto the campus.
Well, it's not a shipping container. I don't care about the modular, I want the shipping container.
Don't put them in shipping. They, they, they won't have a shipping container. It'll be a nice facility.
Feel better.
Be a nice facility.
That quickly?
Yes.
That's.
Yeah, they're, they're working on it, they got, they're through DSA, they're, they're going.
Whose dime is the facility on?
It's on the federal government grant.
Including the $20,000 soil study to make sure that.
That's on them, that's on the healthcare district.
You were going right where I was going, weren't you?
Are the, will both centers be open year round, summertime?
Um, I believe, I'm not, I shouldn't say that for sure, but they're looking at outside of school hours for community services.
So is the one in San Antonio campus open this summer?
It wasn't open, well, we'll see if it's open because summer school does occur there for, for students on the San Antonio campus.
And do they do athletic exams, you know, pre?
I'm not, I'm not certain if they're doing athletic exams again, you know, the board took the step to have the athletic trainers on our staff for the two high schools providing the service.
Besides, are the physicals, if they need to do the annual physicals?
Right.
That, that would be something that I would think they have doctors on staff that could perform. I'm not sure if they're being asked to be at other campuses.
I had a question about, in the agreement, there was something about the healthcare pathway at Casa Grande and integrating it. Um, and my only pause, which is fabulous, but my only pause has to do with volunteers, reference volunteers and confidentiality issues. So I just, given the confidentiality nature of healthcare and part of the pathway, I just, I just.
So again, as being part of the pathway, that's a learning.
Right.
Um, opportunity for the students and they already are participating at Pelham Valley Hospital and other settings where that's a necessity and they have to sign confidentiality. As part of having that opportunity to serve.
Great.
For intern.
Other questions?
I have one quick question. Are students from Pelham High allowed to access either of these?
Yes.
Because it specifically says near Casa Grande students and stuff.
Yeah, the San Antonio campus was, was opened and acknowledged and information shared at Pelham High Campus that's available.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Uh, item M seven, five-year renewal authorization for the sixth grade charter academy of Pelham Junior High to continue as a charter school in the Pelham City School District. I'll take a motion.
Second.
I'd like Jane to speak to this since she's been working.
I don't know, she's been a part of it. Test scores are down.
The test scores, well.
Tearing it up.
In the, in the renewal of a charter, we have to look at their academic standing. And there is absolutely no reason in the world not to extend this charter for five years because their academic standing is outstanding. They have increased in both math and language arts by 70 points. Um, they have served a large variety and a diverse student population. Um, and they have an API of 903.
Highest in the district.
The highest in the district. So that is their, our, our kind of pilot and our test case of looking at one-to-one devices and what can happen when students are provided a true 21st century-based education. Um, and we're getting some very positive results.
I think it's also important, Stephen, you know, I had this conversation, I believe, about, you know, you always worry that, that it's going to somehow, not somehow, it's going to self-select, right? That you end up with the private school when people can afford it in a certain demographic and a certain support network at home and that whole thing and Steve's comment was.
It's a very diverse population and is a real cross-section of our elementary district.
It's representative of the district as well.
Wait, how, how do you get in?
By application.
You applica, it's first come, first served.
First come, first served.
This, this coming school year will be the first time though that we've had a waitlist.
But there's no test in, like they were talking about with some of the math for the afternoon.
No testing.
Okay, no testing. What, do you lottery at some point or?
We do, we, we had to go to the lottery this year for the first time, we have a waitlist.
And we were at 60, are we still at 60, remind me?
We have max 64, so.
64 is max.
Yes.
And I have to say, I was at that promotion, promotion and I talked to several parents afterwards that were just beaming and loved the program and said they did it over again in a heartbeat. It was really neat, loved, people love it.
I've heard, in reviewing the, the criteria, it talks about parental involvement.
Yes.
And an advisory council, how frequently do they meet? And I'm assuming there's parents on this.
Yes, so we have parental involvement requirement of 10 hours a year. And they do that in a variety of ways so people can come in and actually help. Dana has parents coming in and running little book groups and that kind of thing to organizing a field trip, to helping correct things at home, that kind of thing. So there's a lot of different ways for people to get involved. And there is an advisory group that meets three, about three times a year um, that helps Renee and Dana and Mary kind of guide the program, gathers input, talks about changes, that kind of thing.
Good, any other questions? All those in favor of a five-year renewal?
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Very exciting.
Yeah, that's right. All right, item A, resolution 1314-32 of the Board of Education, same schools, I'll mention Joint Union High School Districts who authorize designated personnel to sign contract and agreement documents for fiscal year 2014, 2015. This is an annual.
Second.
All those in favor?
Do we need to talk about the cap? We should cap these guys, 25, 30 bucks, Steve, what do you want, what authority?
Well, we have, we have three people who can sign. The chief business official, the assistant superintendent, superintendent are the only people who can sign agreements.
But that's only on prior approval by us or is there?
Well, on a rare occasion, we ask you for, to ratify an agreement. Uh, you already gave us authorization to move forward, for instance, on the Larnaca Casa Grande. There's one that was too late to be here, you'll be ratifying the agreement, the work that needs to start this week. Maybe with Mike. Well, the people who are performing the works are, are starting today.
We'll talk about it.
Very hopeful of them.
Okay. Are you good?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, I am going through my list. Uh, anybody discussion items on the enrollment or the ADA?
I just was curious how it looks for next year.
At this point, remember, next year's the year they were expecting to be slightly down and in the following two years, recovering a little bit as you look at the budget, but very slightly down.
Okay. Uh, moving further down to discussion on first reading of the Pelham Joint Union High School District's new course. Does anybody have any discussion they would like to, except the engineering course?
Yes, it is, yes.
STEM course.
STEM, that was great, that, that was very.
And it's coming with grand dollars from the county.
Wow.
And, well, the county and really it's private funds coming through the county to school districts.
It's excellent, I'm excited to see that.
What, so when, that engineering course, is that for the college departments?
Um, it is A through G approved.
Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah.
And it's.
It's.
Hands-on plus the academic application?
Yeah, it's the academic applications plus the hands-on, it's an engineering-based program. Our teacher who is teaching it is an amazing rock star who has an MBA and is coming out of industry and decided to become a teacher.
Awesome.
So it's a really good opportunity for kids.
We talked about that, I think that's a great, great addition.
All right, I'm going to move on to action on items heard in closed session. And I always preface this by saying we met in closed session to talk about student disciplinary items. There was evidence presented, stories, the whole thing, we get, there's a whole background. When I read this out, you all go, pick it, we're just pulling something out of the air, there's a whole story. So, uh, moving on to case 48. Case has been presented to the board, the student did commit expel act, it's defined by the California Education Code. Recommended motions to the board to expel and to suspend the site discipline teams. Recommendation for expulsion in accordance with policy to allow continuing enrollment in a district-operated school under mandated conditions, student suspended expulsion status will be in effect the fall and spring semester of the 2014, 2015 school year. Conditions above subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, substance abuse counseling program, screens and community service and appropriate academic performance.
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that one goes five oh. The second and final case is case 49, case has been presented to the board that the student did commit an expel act as defined by the California Education Code. Prior disciplinary actions have been attempted but not successful and/or due to the nature of the act, presence of the pupil causes a continuing danger to the physical safety of the pupil and others. Recommended motions for the board to support the site discipline team's recommendation for expulsion and according to support policy to facilitate enrollment in a county-operated court and community school. Student's expulsion status will affect for one calendar year. Conditions above, subject to review with evidence of positive attendance, satisfactory behavior, life skills counseling program, community service, appropriate academic performance.
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and that goes five oh as well. And then we also have, in closed session, we, um, had discussion on and voted and approved some KC waivers and there were a number of them and I'm going to read out them in a summary format. So after review of evidence presented for students 14-9 and 14-14 through 14-20, Board of Education voted five to zero to waive the KC graduation requirements for English, Language Arts and/or Math under the provisions of Ed Code Section 60851C. Okay? Forever in the record. And other than that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, or adjourned. Thank you all very much.